All right, thank you Frank, cable access. Good evening, everybody, welcome to Foxborough's Board of Selectmen. Today is Tuesday, February 9th. I'll go over the agenda. Starting at seven o'clock, we always have citizens input. We'll follow that with the selectmen's update. At 7:15, NPS LLC will have a public hearing for the discussion and a vote for the New England Revolution home game application. At 7:25, a discussion and the vote of change of managers regarding the liquor license for the VFW. At 7:35, we're going to have a discussion on the domain, Foxborough, I'm sorry, the Foxborough Domain, which is the 40B off of Fisher Street, regarding the mitigation set forward with the zoning board of appeals. At 7:45 and 7:55, we'll have, I'm sorry, 7:45, we'll discuss the annual town meeting warrant, not to be confused with the fall town meeting, which changed to the winter town meeting, which is next February 23rd. And then we'll have the town manager's update, the assistant town manager's update, and then we're going to go into executive session at the end to approve the January 26th executive session minutes and discuss lease negotiations regarding the Gillette Stadium and the fire station discussion of real property. So if we could, Jenny, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seven o'clock, is there anybody here for citizens input? Citizens input? No? Okay. Selectmen's update, I'll keep it brief, couple things. Next week is school vacation, so happy travels to all that are traveling for that week. We do not have a meeting the following Tuesday, because that's the special town meeting on Tuesday at the high school, starting at seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Okay, and there's eight warrant articles.
It's 7:30.
Seven thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Check the website, it might be seven thirty.
I think it is seven thirty.
It's seven thirty.
And so just, yeah, so typically they're Monday nights, this one is Tuesday, because it's the following, the school vacation. Eight warrant articles that the advisory committee has vetted over the last several months, and the Board of Selectmen and all the applicants had worked pretty hard on, so if you could go to that, that would be great. Shout out to the advisory committee, they work, they've been working kind of double duty, they're finishing up the fall town meeting, winter town meeting, at the same time that they're reviewing the budgets for the following year towards the May. So they meet, pretty much it's been every Wednesday at the Public Safety Building, that starts at seven o'clock. So if you get a chance to go to any of those meetings, it's a good opportunity to see all the departments, all the budgets, all the discussion before it gets too far, so please try to go to those meetings. One topic, we always have a sentence or two on the agenda that says anything that's not anticipated within 72 hours can come forward. I had asked Bill, or Bill is going to give a brief update on the storms with National Grid and the DPW, probably part of your town manager's update. If it's okay with the board, I wanted to extend that discussion to include the board with the storms on Friday and Saturday, the one yesterday on Monday, and moving towards the next storm, the next time that we're meeting is not going to be for several weeks. I had given Bill a suggestion to reach out to National Grid. Bill was not here during the 2011, 2012 National Grid outages, there were a lot of commitments and promises and expectations, so I wanted you to hear from the board and get some additional information, and then maybe give you some direction to go with National Grid. I, we'll talk about it, I mean, I wasn't very happy with the response on Friday from National Grid, so I think, I think we need to wrap our arms around that and then discuss it at the end of this meeting. So if you're listening to this, 7:55, we can have that discussion. So I think that's it, anyone else under selectmen update? So first thing on the agenda is a public hearing on, since it is a public hearing, we do have to wait till 7:15, we've got 10 minutes, so if it's okay with the board, we'll go to our action items. There's seven action items.
Right, do we want to save number one for last? Do we want to go through that one first?
The Board of Selectmen. No, I think we have the January 26th, I think we have, are these the executive session minutes?
Yeah, no, these are regular.
Yeah, so we can approve those, alright.
I make a motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from January 26, 2016, as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, further discussion on the minutes approvals?
I just had, on page three, the second full paragraph, we went to, it wasn't a seminar, it was the MMA convention, and also Mary Beth was not present.
Okay, so strike, Mrs. Bernard, change seminar to convention?
Yep, thank you.
I just had one change, just to a clarity, page three, second paragraph, court time was a minimum of three hours, and I just meant that it's in this contract, the number has been increased to four hours.
I think you're looking at the wrong minutes.
This is January 26th, right?
Those, I think those are the executive session that we're talking about afterwards.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. You're right. Then I'm good.
Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Motion carries with those changes?
Okay, number two, constellon aging, I make a motion that we approve the gift donation of $15 in memory of Laura Smith for use with senior center programs from Ms. Louise Hall.
I'll second that, and thank you, Mrs. Hall, for your donation.
Motion made, seconded with gratitude, further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Number three, Foxborough Recreation Friends Group, I make a motion that we accept the grant in the amount of $3,102 from the Partners in Patriotism Fund to the Foxborough Recreation Friends Group for C-C-R-A installation of smart board and projector.
And I'll second that, and thank you to the Partners in Patriotism for that donation.
Okay, motion made and seconded with gratitude, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero, thank you.
Number four, Bailey's Team for Autism, I make a motion that we approve the fifth annual Bailey's Run for Autism on April 3, 2016, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Friends of the flagpole, I make a motion, we accept the gift donation of $250 from the Sons of the American Legion to be used for the flagpole.
I'll second that and thank the Sons of the American Legion, nice donation, thank you.
Very good, motion made and seconded with gratitude, further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Right, number six, I make a motion that we approve the AdCom slash Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from 1/27/16 and 2/3/16, as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, further discussion? Under discussion and more of a clerical thing, both of these meeting minutes, and Jenny, thank you for putting them together, both of these meeting minutes were done at a meeting where only two people went to, so it's not a board. First of all, it wasn't, it was advertised as a public meeting, but it never made that because it was only two people, and with five of us, only two people can vote on it, so we'll never get the majority enough to approve them. So I would make a recommendation to put these in our file, and they can be posted, but we can't approve them because it wasn't a board meeting.
Oh, alright.
Does that make sense?
Does, actually.
Alright, does that make sense, Jenny?
Yeah, actually, I talked to friends, he said, because there wasn't a majority of vote, we don't even have to write up names.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree. I mean, it's nice to have it in the file for information, if you want to do it.
Well, you just don't want it to be questioned by.
Yeah.
Do you want me to rescind my motion?
We can vote, well, it's there, so we can vote, all those in favor?
Oh, okay.
All those in favor of approving the minutes? All those opposed, motion carries five zero, so we'll keep them in the record for files.
Right, number seven, I make a motion that we approve the Hackney license for Wayne R. De Mars, expiring on February 9, 2018.
And I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, under discussion. Is there a reason the police officer signature is missing from the application?
It's on the, um.
Oh, it's on the backside?
It's on the back, he didn't sign, attorney signed the back, Chief O'Leary.
So why would, yeah, I think we've asked this before, what, you don't know, but there's two, two places for a police signature, and maybe we can look at that form?
Yeah. And am I assuming the social security number was blood, blood.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so motion was made to approve the renewal, seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
There we go.
Alright, 7:10 or 7:15? Seven?
Can we do that in five minutes?
I hate to do a liquor license change before the time, in case somebody wanted to be here. This is where you guys earn the big bucks, anyone want to entertain us?
In our information packet, we had a notice about the dorms?
Phase one, yep.
Yeah, can you give us, I know we have a letter.
Yeah, they have been working on that, that process with them.
Is this part of the, is this a continuation of the notices that we got a few months ago? We got, we got a notice.
No, I think it might be a different one, only what, because I think it's, is this the same one?
Same one, this has been going on since 2010.
Right, and they keep sending it to us every single year, but even though we've been working on fixing the dam, so.
Yeah.
So it's like, it's like a formula that they have, apparently, they keep sending it to us, but we're, they have been working on it, I know that for a fact.
Okay, but we're in no, are we in any danger of being fined, or?
No, I mean, we're, we're, we're working with it, in fact, I can understand why we keep getting the same letter, and so we've asked that question, it keeps sending it to us.
Okay.
So we've actually been working with them on that project.
And also, we, under, number six, the town of Mansfield, it was the proposed rotary full obide slash Foxborough obide, and this was from the town of Mansfield, and they said that they had, they had no problems with the rotary, so is that the plan?
The plan, the plan was to do the rotary, that, that's what the planning board accepted for that project, and I actually, I've been trying to, we're trying to work with Mass Highway to see if they'll approve that design, and I've been working with the state to see if we can get some grant funds for that, to get that rebuilt.
Okay, so, but that is the design that they're, they're going with?
That's the one they'd like to, yes, they like to do that. That was the preferred design, yeah.
The access, yeah, but there's a planning board meeting that was a little different.
Yeah, they designed it, they agreed to design it, which they have, and they also, he agreed to offer some money, like 75,000 towards the cost of building it.
Right.
And so I've actually reached out to the state to see if we can get some grant funds, and it was, I got a pretty favorable response.
Yeah, because we had done that road tour, just to get everybody up to speed, and when we talked to the people from Mass DOT, they, they agreed that the rotary was the probable, I mean, just preliminarily, probably thinking that that was probably the best solution to that.
Correct.
Intersection problem, so I'm glad to see that this is going forward, probably going forward.
Yeah, the process is right now is to go through the state, to get the design approved, and if we get the design approved, that, and we're trying to move the process along as quickly as we can, because if we can get this approved before the end of the fiscal year, we might be able to get the funding for the project, for the state, so.
Okay, what was the question?
Okay, Joe, you have a question, if you could just introduce yourself for the record?
My name's Joe Garrity, I live at 68 Spring Street, and I'm just curious about something. On the warrants tonight, are you guys approving for to have the warrant from the Board of Selectmen to have the presidential primaries on March 1st?
No, there's, there's two warrants, one where it's already passed for the fall, winter town meeting, what's in our packet tonight are new warrants proposed for the May town meeting.
I'm talking about for the primary election on March 1st, presidential primaries.
We did that last, the last meeting. We did that the last meeting.
So it's all set?
Yeah, I think you had asked questions about that at the last meeting, and stumped me, so Jenny answered. I didn't know the answer.
And then I was also seeing, besides, guess what, I was going to bring up, you know how Patriots Place does fireworks on July 3rd? I was seeing if we can do them on 4th of July instead at Patriots Place.
Hmm.
Out of our control.
I don't think the town can do them on Patriots Place.
For Founder's Day fireworks, because Sharon and Wapple do them, that's why I was just seeing.
On the 4th of July?
Yeah.
Alright, you were from Sharon, right? Go over to Sharon, yeah, we do, I think we're going to stick with Founder's Day.
Okay.
That's probably the best thing to do, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Alright, being 7:15, representatives from NPS LLC regarding the New England Revolution home game application.
I'll read this into the record. Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183A and Chapter 136, Section 4. Town of Foxborough revise general bylaws, Article 5, Section 6, and also stadium rules and regulations. Will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 9, 2016, beginning at 7:15 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, South Street, to review the applications submitted by Kraft Soccer LLC for the 2016 New England Revolution games, including potential home playoff games, as well as an international match and double headers that include the Revolution. All events are proposed for Gillette Stadium, all applications for these events are on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you, Chris. What we'll do is, we'll, the public hearing's open, we'll hear from the applicant, we'll ask questions, whereas a public hearing, if there's anyone from the audience, introduce themselves and ask questions, we'll vote to close the hearing, and then we'll vote on a decision on the hearing, so, welcome, Jess.
Jess Yannis with Gillette Stadium, so here before you this evening to request the license for the 2016 New England Revolution season. There aren't any significant changes to our operation this season, I'm sure you've reviewed in your packet, the application, it's almost identical to the previous two seasons. We are requesting the opening of 3/12, so the only thing is, we're about a week earlier than last year, and we, we do have a snow removal plan in place in the event that we do have snow for a revs match. We're requesting 17 home games, and hopefully any postseason play that the franchise makes it into. Of those 17 home games, one is a 3:00 PM kick, two of them are 4:00 PM, and the balance are 7:30. We'll anticipate about 18,000 people in attendance per match, but as we've seen in previous years, it varies drastically based on the time of year and the weather, we do significant walk-up sales for each of our, our games in, the summer on Saturdays where we have nicer weather. We're operating a lower bowl of the stadium again on both the east and the west side, and we will have general seating in Sections 143 and 142, as we have in previous years, to accommodate the fort and our, our stronger fan base. We're requesting gates one hour prior, lots two hours prior, parking is included in the price of the ticket as in previous years, and that's, right now, we don't have any double headers to request, hopefully some may be added moving forward, and we do have some international soccer matches in the works, we have one application already at town hall, so I'll be before you for that one separately. This application is pretty straightforward, as of right now, just the 17 home matches.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. So in our packet, there's correspondence from the Public Safety Officials, Fire, Police, a letter from the, I'm sorry, and also from the Board of Health, and from the Stadium Advisory Committee. Do you want to speak from the, for the Stadium Advisory Committee?
Sure. Thanks, Jim. Really, we don't see anything different than what's been happening in previous years, just want to highlight, though, that the, the Revolution's attendance was, they were given an award for 30% up in attendance last year, and I think that's good news for the town. I think it just says that the, the revs are getting more and more popular, and let's hope we can beat that this year, so the town can benefit from the revenue.
Perfect, well said, thank you. And if you could just give your name for the record?
Sure, Joel Angelico, Stadium Advisory Committee Vice Chair.
Okay, very good. And Bill, any, any updates from Public Safety with respect to anything that's in the packet?
There are no concerns expressed.
Okay. Discussion from the board?
Actually, one question, Jess, have you always had Wednesday night matches?
We have, yeah, we have two this year, I believe we had two last year, we usually have one or two per season.
Okay, and there's no special commuting issues that go around with crowds coming in?
No, they're typically pretty poorly attended.
Are they, okay.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Anybody else? Anybody from the audience where it's a public hearing? Seeing none, do I have a motion in the affirmative to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion on that, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Discussion on a vote?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve all of the matches for the Revolution game proposed.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Great, hope you have a great season.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, it's never gone this fast. Any other updates, Bill, you want to entertain us with?
Just, I just will note tonight that just prior to tonight's meeting, we received a payment for the Winter Classic event at the stadium, which in the amount of about $348,000, which was a very significant payment, obviously, but what's even more significant is that, that final payment, which was, which really concludes the 2015 season of events, resulted in going, or going, hitting the $3.34 million mark, which is a new high for events held at the stadium this past year. So that's, that's the largest amount we've ever received. So, so it's obviously a good sign in the sense that we're, we're taking more revenue from the stadium on these events, and then based upon what I'm seeing now for scheduled events coming up this summer, we could easily see a similar type of a repeat in terms of revenue, so that is good news in that regard. So I wanted to just pass along that great news, and appreciate the fact that we received that payment today, and congratulate the Kraft Group on that, on that effort.
Phenomenal.
On that work.
Good news.
I just, this, one thing that I worked on, the, said, this past few days, is I did work on the aggregation program that I mentioned to you at your last, one of your last meetings, where you had that presentation. I have received, I now have information on all three companies that provide that service, and so I haven't decided which company to go with, but the one thing is certain that we should really, I didn't put this on your list for consideration at the annual, but I will add it for consideration, is to, we take a look at that. We have been working with Bay State Consulting, who's been doing, has been our power, our power broker, energy broker for the past, I think, 12 years or so, 10, 12 years for the town. They actually are the, are one of the three companies that does this, this work as well, and so I had a presentation from them today, so that, that sort of rounds out the three, the three groups. I actually went to Dedham to see the presentation from Good, from Good Energy on a regional basis, you had the one from, from Colonial as well, and then we had the one, I had the one from Bay State today. So, but it's clear to me that this is an opportunity, that's a good thing for the, for the town and for the residents, and so I think I really would like the board, see the board pursue this, so I'll, I'll put it on as a, as a potential holder in the, in the annual town meeting warrant for consideration. And we don't have to choose the consultant beforehand, but they're all, they're all, they all charge the same amount of money, so it's just a question of who offers the, the, you know, which one do you like the best? The fact that we already have an established relationship with this one company is a benefit to us, I think, personally, but.
Well, is there a normal course, you know, heading up to a town meeting to have sort of public educational meetings?
Yes, yeah, they will do that, and they've offered, all three companies are willing to do that, so, so that will be part of their process, is to have that educational discussion and to present that information to everyone.
I just have a question. Couple of days ago, you mentioned that Sun Edison, who is doing our solar.
Yes.
Array field, was going around to area residences.
Yes.
Offering electricity.
Yes.
Is this, if you, if you took them up on their offer, what does this mean if the town goes into aggregation?
Well, if.
With another company?
Actually, it'll, it'll be a fairly similar type of thing, the only, the only difference is that there's only a limited number of residents that can actually participate in that, in the Sun Edison one. I think it's only like 150 that can actually do that. So this would actually allow, would afford the opportunity to the entire town, plus any commercial industrial properties as well.
But what happens to the Sun, if someone is signing up for Sun Edison, because this is the first time they've had the opportunity to do aggregation, if the town agrees to do an aggregation, what happens to them? Are they?
Well, here's the thing, is that they would, they would, they would have to, since they're already locked in, I don't think, I think they'd have to opt out of the program for the, for the aggregation program, that the rates will be very similar in terms of what they're being offered right now, from what I've seen, and it's actually a longer term, from what I understand, I think it's like a 10-year term?
For the solar.
For the solar.
With Sun Edison?
With Sun Edison, yeah, and so whereas you, you would not likely to get that with the, with the, with aggregation, the most you can get is maybe, maybe two years at the most.
So at this, at this stage, you're saying, buyer beware, if you go into, if you agree to go with Sun Edison, and something else comes down the road, you're not, you're, you're not, first of all, you're not going to be offered it, because they're only offering the aggregation price to the base, to the base service, which is what we all are now, we're on National Grid.
Right, right.
So if those people who are buying from Sun Edison, they won't even have the opportunity to do the aggregation, because they're, they're in a private company, they're all, right?
Well, what will happen is that they'll, if they opt in, that rate will be a lower rate, it's a, it's a low rate now, I think it's like 9.2, 9.3 is, which is pretty much the rate that's being offered, the lowest rate I've seen offered anywhere, anyway.
You're talking about the solar?
Yes, on the aggregation.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, then they, they really not, wouldn't be losing, they would just wouldn't be, they'd be locking it for longer term, actually.
Okay, but I just want people to be aware that possibly down the road, the town is going to go into an aggregation agreement.
Yeah, potentially, right.
So if this makes it on the warrant for May town meeting between now and May, the vendor will come in, make the presentation, reach out to the community?
Yes.
And that's a good question, because I think we asked the same question when he was here.
Right.
And it's probably going to get asked 20 more times.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a, yeah, so there's a bunch of different stuff going on at the same time, so.
Right, but the difference, what's, what is interesting about the solar, the Sun Edison proposal is that it's a longer-term lock-in, which means that you're guaranteed a pretty low rate for a long period of time, whereas you're pretty much at the market, I mean, you're locked in for a year or two at the most with, with aggregation, but you're always subject to the changes in the market, so you could have a pretty good rate one year, you could have a not-so-great rate, not as good a rate the next year, but you can always opt out in that case.
Yeah, and similar to, Veridian came through a couple of years ago and blanketed the town, and a lot of people signed up for that as well, similar stuff.
So, so that's, that's where that's at, so I don't know that, I don't, I don't, I haven't seen anything that, that concerns me about the Sun Edison program to suggest to you that it, that people shouldn't do that.
Well, it would be nice to know what their opt-out policy is.
Right.
You know?
It may not be as, as great as the, as aggregation, because it's a limited group, it's only 150 people.
Right.
So as a result, they're kind of counting on those people to buy into the program, because it's offsetting the, the cost of the program. So they may be, they may be locked in for that commitment. But I'm not sure it's a bad thing, it's just, it's just that they may not have the option to opt out.
You know, it'd be nice to have people to be aware of.
Right, that's all, yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda, VFW discussion and vote for change of manager. In our packet, there's the application, backup information, and a letter of support from Warren Wright, from the commander of Foxborough VFW. Welcome.
Hi.
Warren, if you could just introduce yourself for the record?
Warren Wright, commander of Foxborough VFW. Tamara Vital, bar manager.
Welcome.
Thanks.
So, in, in front of us is the, is the packet, but before we ask questions, you want to give any presentation or background to this?
Our bar manager, Greg Dickman, has moved to North Attleboro. Don't feel like he's going to have the time to put in to take care of it. Tamara's been basically doing it for him, so we brought it up at our meeting, because she's not a member of the VFW, to have her a bar manager. Our bylaws say I appoint who I choose, but being a non-member, I thought it was fair to bring it up in front of the membership. Overwhelming vote to make her a bar manager.
Okay.
So that's why we submitted the application.
Very good, thank you. Questions from the board?
The application looks good.
Tamara, you, this is your first time. Uh, Tamara, you, this is your first time being on a license?
Yes.
And, you know, we'll probably go through our same battery of questions about, you know, how you would manage that, and are you aware of the, uh, the rules and regulations in the town of Foxborough?
I am, I actually looked at your liquor regulations, I've read that, I have printed it out. I have it at the office at work, I also have it on my, um, computer. So I have gone over everything, but I, I've been a bartender at the VFW since 2009. Before that, from 2005, I'm, from 1995 to 2000, I bartended. So, yes, I am well-aware of the regulations, the laws.
Dave, you want to ask you a question?
You're aware of Fox Cares, correct?
Fox Cares?
Yeah. You, you were the Fox Cares group? They'll be reaching out to you.
Okay. I did, um, reach out to Sergeant Noonan. I haven't heard back. I sent it through the town website, a message that, for him to contact me, um, about tip certification, and I just wanted to introduce, uh, introduce myself to him, but I haven't heard back yet, so...
You, you want to give a quick overview of what Fox Cares is?
Yeah, so Fox Cares is a group of, um, liquor license holders that form this group for, uh, responsible service. And they meet, um, probably on a quarterly basis, and they do, uh, they share best practices. They bring in speakers from the ABCC, Chief Aleary's a, a regular attendee. And they, they really talk about best practices and some of the, um, some of the pitfalls that, that come across, whether it's fake IDs or, uh, serving to minors, um, things to watch out for, things not to watch out for. And they collect dues, and they actually do their own, uh, self-compliance checks. They bring somebody in from the outside to go around to the different establishments that are members, um, and they share the, the results internally. They, they don't want to make those public, which is understandable.
Okay.
But it's just all, all for their internal use and to try and be responsible with their service.
Okay.
So it's a really good group, and I strongly recommend it.
So I'll be hearing from them?
Yes, you will.
Okay.
Anyone else from the board? Uh, Bill, anything on the, uh, application? Everything is in order?
Everything's in order.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, um, Tamara Patel as the bar manager for the VFW.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Tamara, very, very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Warren, thank you for your service.
They can't help.
You at the meat raffle, maybe?
Twenty-seven.
Next item on the agenda, I'm going to spend a few minutes just to, can you, a little, a little background. First of all, I apologize, there was nothing in the packet, um, Chris had called me up earlier. There was some information provided, but it's a little lengthy for you to read right at the meeting. The, what typically people have been calling the 40B, there was a housing development, affordable housing development under Mass laws that was proposed off of Fisher Street behind the 99. It went through that process, uh, primarily with the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, a 40B application bypasses a lot of the local permitting regulatory authority in town. So during the zoning board process, they have the ability to approve it, disapprove it, or approve it with conditions. They approved it with conditions. Subsequent to that, uh, it was appealed, the appeal was dropped, and now they're moving forward. So part of the zoning board approval, and if you look at the conditions, there's two conditions that bring the selectmen into a little bit of authority on this. One condition is a monetary condition, um, that will be provided to the town through the Board of Selectmen that be held in a fund, uh, should we vote for it. And then the second one is some consideration for roadway improvements coming down Fisher Street for a right-turning lane. And the option is to either approve the steps of designing, permitting, and building it, or accepting the money, um, in, in, in working in that direction. So, I sat with Bill Keegan, Town Manager, Bill Casper, the Building Inspector, and we had a phone conference with Barney Overroot, who was the, um, the authority at the zoning board. So I had asked, uh, if you, if you guys wanted to come to the table to kind of explain to the board the background of this and give us some insight. I also reached out to the neighbors through one of the members that I knew, told them about this hearing, so invited them to, to the meeting. And I see if there's some people in the background, so, where this is a, not a public hearing, but I'd like to open it, to hear it, discuss it, and then open it up to any of the neighbors if they have any additional insight or consideration that we would think about before we make our decision. So if you could just introduce yourself, welcome, and thank you for coming.
I'm Barnett Overd, I'm the, currently the Chair of the Board of Appeals. At the time of the permit's consideration, I was not the chairman, but I've been a member, and was a member throughout the entire process.
Okay, and you're the chairman now?
Yes.
Correct, thank you.
And Bill Casper, Building Commissioner.
Okay.
In, in approving the, um, the 40B, in approving the comprehensive permit, we impose a number of conditions. Two of them require Board of Selectmen attention and ultimately action. One of them is for the payment of $150,000 to the town of Foxborough. That amount is to go into a mitigation fund. It's to be used for whatever purpose the Board of Selectmen determine. It's your discretion, it's absolutely your discretion. There's no time limit as to when that money has to be used, and again, there's no limit or restriction or requirement relative to the use. The only requirement is that the Hanover Company, or more properly, Hanover RS Limited Partnership, the developer, has to make that payment before the time of the first building permit having been issued. I understand from Bill, and he'll explain it a little bit more, that it's likely that a building permit will be issued next month. So at some point in time, that, between now and when that building permit is issued, the Hanover Company has to pay the town $150,000.
Okay.
Okay? There's no vote that needs to be taken on that. It's just a determination that the board has to make as to whether they want the money now or they want to wait. And my recommendation would be, it's better in our pocket than it is in our pocket, so there's, there's no reason not to require that payment at this point in time.
So if I understand it correctly, the, the requirement is they have to make that payment before the first permit is issued?
Correct.
And if we don't act on it by the time that they, say it takes us three months, not, not, three months, they can't get a permit until that's issued, or they can get a permit and we didn't vote on it, so we lose the money?
No, I, I think all we have to do is vote to accept it.
Correct.
Correct.
This is the first, the first part of the condition. Not yet.
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm not expecting, I, I wasn't expecting any of us to determine where it was going to go.
If we vote to accept it, um, then the, um, building permit will flow.
We've already had a pre-construction meeting with the design and contractors. I have the plans, we're going through the plan review process now. I'm expecting a application within the next two weeks to construct. I have 30 days to either approve or deny that permit, so, um, it's forthcoming. They are looking to start land clearing in March. So, I think sometime within the next four weeks. Prior to me issuing it, there will be submitting that first of $150,000 payment to the town.
They're just going to automatically submit that, we don't have to request it or anything?
Correct.
So we don't have to do, vote on anything to do with that.
Now, I've already mentioned to counsel for the developer, to remind him of the obligation, and I believe Bill has been contacted by the developer in that regard. But there's no reason to wait until a building permit is issued, we might as well have the money now. Again, there's no requirement that any decision be made as to what, what use that money should be, should be for.
Have we ever had anything like this before, like a lump sum for mitigation that had no...
The Hanover Group, uh, with the lodge at Foxborough, when that 40B development was constructed, they also had mitigation fee, uh, mitigation funds. But they were earmarked for specific, uh, specific items, where this one, at the suggestion of, uh, Town Manager, was to be put into a, a lump sum for, uh, for consideration and used by the selectmen, which I think was a better way of handling it than it was with the original Foxborough, because they came back several times in front of the board to modify that decision, because money was moved around to different, different uses. So still avoid that.
What was your thought on, on the amount, Bill?
Well, the, uh, the purpose of, of having, putting it into a fund is that it then, it, first of all, as Bill correctly points out, that it wouldn't require, if, if, if first, it would identify a process for how those funds should be appropriated and used for certain purposes, as opposed to just submitting purposes into the ZVA for consideration, into the permit. The problem is, if once you put it into the permit, then you have to hold a hearing to, to change the permit, if, if it goes for something else. This way, if the money goes to the board, then it strictly, it stays with the board, and, and the board, and whatever process you determine, what you want, how you want to use to determine that money, rests with you, or the, or the committee, or subcommittee that, that, that is in charge of that. So it makes for a, it doesn't complicate the, the ZVA permit, it keeps there's a separate process.
Okay, so I just want to read you the paragraph that's stamped by the town clerk. It's under section, uh, and, and under the mitigation numbers, I dot two. "The applicant shall make a mitigation payment to the town of Foxborough in the amount of $150,000 prior to the issuance of the first building permit for the project. Such amount shall be held by the town in a mitigation fund with a specific purpose for use of such amount to be determined by the Foxborough Board of Selectmen." So again, there's nowhere in here that says we have to vote. It's, it's up, the onus is on the applicant to get that in before they can get the permit. So let's lump these together a little bit, let's move on to the second one.
Okay, the second one is a little bit more, more complicated as far as what, what's required. The developer, the Board of Selectmen has, has an option. The Board of Selectmen can either require the developer to design a right-hand turn-only lane on Fisher Street as it approaches Route 140. The developer then would be required to go to the Mass Department of Transportation to seek its approval. If the Mass DOT approves the project, if it approves the design, developer is required to construct the, the right-hand turn-only lane. If Mass DOT does not approve it, or does not act within one year, then payment is to be made to the town in the amount of $150,000, less the cost of the design and whatever out-of-pocket expenditures the developer has in going to Mass DOT. Alternatively, the board can determine, can decide that the developer is to pay the town $150,000. That amount is to be used for roadway improvements and safety. Now again, the decision has to be made before the issuance of the first building permit.
And carried out before the last occupancy permit?
Correct.
Correct.
So that, that's the window there?
Correct.
So the $150,000, if we didn't put in, make them do the right lane, $150,000 goes to us and, and it's on the town to do...
Roadway improvements, of course, and safety.
So do we have a scope of ideas of roadwork improvements and safety that we would do?
Not at this juncture, no.
I had asked Bill Casper to bring a, a site plan, just to look at the general area of, do you mind holding that up, Bill?
Sure.
Barney, real quick, this idea of a right-turn-only lane, um, where did that originate?
In discussion, you know, during the, during the hearings.
Okay, is that something that the neighborhood wanted? I'm seeing some no's, okay.
You know, part of the thought-
They wanted an extra left-hand turn lane?
Well, part of, well, because left-hand turn lane, we'd have the same issue, we would have to go to Mass DOT, and it would probably be more difficult to get approval for that, I would think, than, than a right-hand turn lane. But I would also think if you had a right-hand turn lane, it would probably require most people, or at least convince most people who are going left, to use that left lane and not to be in, obviously not to be in the right-hand turn-only lane. So you would be directing traffic.
Would that be a right lane that would stack and wait for the light, or would it avoid the light?
It wouldn't avoid the light.
Okay, we just stacked.
Be a queuing lane.
A queuing lane, okay, got it.
Now with that, Fisher Street abuts 140, anything we do from 140 up, I would assume a certain way, is totally under DOT jurisdiction, if you know what I mean?
Yeah, they have to weigh in on this decision. Because it's a state highway, they would need an access permit from DOT.
That's correct.
So, I always wanted to use one of these pointers for this, rather than drive my cat crazy. But, uh, this, this is the domain of Foxborough. This is Fisher Street. This is 140 here. So that's, uh, I think, Pud 99, Comfort Inn, that's Jake and Joe, just so you're orienting, and that's, uh, I think the Residence Inn, and Metta Tech's over here. So, and New, it doesn't go that far, but over here is Forbes Crossing. So what the mitigation would, what you would consider is whether we put a right-hand queuing lane right there, back about 100 feet. And that would allow, uh, any cars that are going to back up from this to go into that lane and make a right-hand turn only. So just to give you an orientation of what, what you're talking, what we're looking at.
And just to clarify things, if all the neighbors are out there shaking their head, no, we don't want it, how did that right-hand lane come up again? Who is saying that they want it?
Well, it was, there was, it came up during discussions with the consult, the traffic consultants.
So this is part of a traffic study?
The que, you, in your packet, you'll see, uh...
We haven't read it, we, we got it two minutes before.
I know, I know that, and I apologize. There's a study that was done by, um, Hanover, the Hanover Company's Traffic Consultant, Viness, and they looked at all the different options out there. And, uh, one was, would a right-hand turn alleviate the traffic that's anticipated during peak hours, uh, in the morning and the afternoon, would that alleviate it? The zoning boards, uh, Traffic Consultant, Ron Mueller and Associates, determined that, it probably would not if the light there was timed properly, because there wasn't that significant amount of traffic that would be going down Fisher Street. That information's in your packet to, to look at. Again, no decision tonight, just kind of an explanation of what, as Jim pointed out, what these mitigation conditions are.
So what's the earliest possible scenario you'd issue a permit for this?
Probably, again, I'm doing the plan review now, they haven't applied yet, but I do expect it for the next couple of weeks. I'm thinking probably mid-March, right now.
So I was, I was thinking, there's a lot of information, this traffic report, I do want to hear from the neighbors. It's not a decision we can just, at this table, make tonight.
No, not at all.
So, the, I think the informa, I haven't looked at what was given tonight, but it was probably the mitigation language-
Right.
Uh, and any plans that we have.
Traffic study.
Traffic study. Well, the traffic study by Viness and also by our traffic reviewer consultant?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, um, the, the pages that we have, are these based on your, the ZVA decision?
Yes.
Is that, so your complete decision is part of the mitigation, because we don't, um, I, I, I downloaded it, uh, today, and pages 17 to 20 are mitigation. And this only shows actually like page 17 and, I think, 19 or 20. I mean, there's other, there's other, um, there's other mitigation things like sidewalks, school bus, uh, shelters, and so it would probably be a good idea if you guys-
For the complete?
-downloaded the complete, so you'll see-
So the, the complete ZVA decision?
There's other mitigation involved.
Yeah, there, there are basically three pages or three-plus pages of the mitigation requirements.
But I wanted to make sure that your decision stood, um, in spite of this, uh, the lawsuit and everything that was dismissed. But your decision as written and as posted is standstill.
Yes, and I don't know what the terms of the settlement were, but they did not impact the, to my knowledge, the town. We've not been requested to, uh, to review anything or to, in any fashion, modify the decision.
Yeah, so, so...
It was, it was a private settlement between the developer and the, and the, and the plaintiffs?
I think, Jenny, uh, I could explain, the bus stop and the sidewalks, that's mitigation that will be done by the developer.
Yes, yes, that, that was in the decision.
Yes.
Yes.
And, uh, they talked about, people got property and, and I, I don't have it with me, but it was-
Fence, yes.
It's like two or three pages, so, but it's, it's worth looking at, just to see the whole, the whole picture.
And, Bill, do you, anything to add to that?
No, I, I think, and the reason why you only see those two pages, because those two pages only relate to the action that's before the board tonight. You know, the only, I think the board couldn't accept the $150,000 general mitigation payment tonight to be held. You could, you can do that tonight, but there's, there's no further action to be taken, other than to create and, and a subsequent meeting of process, as to how you want to accept that.
So I, I think what I'd prefer is, there's nothing in here that says we have to vote on it? I think when, when the applicant- I think when the applicant provides it to the town based on this, then the town would send it to us and would have it as an action item that we would vote-
I would rather do it that way, too.
Okay.
But on the second one, obviously, we need some more information, some time. As I said, I, I'm sorry, are you guys finished?
Actually, there's one other, you know, point and one other obligation that the developer is required to do is to develop an optimal signal timing mechanism for the 140 Fisher Street interchange. So that would address some of the concerns that were addressed by the traffic consultants.
Didn't it also say that not only the 140 interchange, but also Foxborough Boulevard near the new, further down?
No.
Oh, I thought it, I thought it, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me and I thought I-
The one on Forbes Boulevard?
Yeah.
They probably looked at that in the area when they were doing the traffic study and took that into consideration.
You gotta change the timeline, you gotta sequence the-
But again, Forbes Crossing was not in front of the town while this, that development's not in front of the town while this was going through the process. So that wasn't taken into consideration.
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, as I had said, I had reached out to this one gentleman that was, we're inquiring back and forth through this process. I let him know today that this was on the agenda and I see some people from the neighborhood. You're welcome to add any comments that you have for the board? If you could just introduce yourself and your address.
Hi, Harvey Weinstein, 112 South High Street. There's a couple of things that, as neighbors, we're concerned about that we want to address here. The first would be that at no point has anybody in the neighborhood ever been interested in a right-turn-only lane from Fisher Street onto 140. That was never, ever, ever something anybody in the neighborhood asked for. That was something that either the ZBA conjured up on their own or one of the traffic studies conjured up on their own, but that was never something we asked for. What we did ask for, and what we are under the impression was something that was going to be worked on, was two left-hand lanes turning from Fisher Street onto 140.
So here, where you widen Fisher Street, you'd have a right-hand lane that would be either right turn or left turn and a left-turn-only lane. Since 98% of the traffic goes down left from south.
You'd still have two lanes, though, right?
Still have two lanes, but one would be a dedicated left-only and the other would be left or right.
So in effect, you could have two cars coming down Fisher Street and both taking a left at the same time?
Correct, just like at Forbes.
Forbes, okay.
Identical to that.
So, Bill, that's not part of the-
There's no cross-street there, it doesn't go across like Foxborough Boulevard, or like over to Foxborough Boulevard. The other thing that we wanted to raise our concerns about is, I've, you know, driven by Sharon Commons, oh, I don't know, a million times since they pulled all the trees out and then didn't build anything there. I think we'd like to make sure that everything was squared away ahead of time with the traffic and all that before they started ripping trees out.
Ripping trees out of the housing development area?
Where the project is going to go, yeah. Yeah, that, all that traffic stuff should be addressed and solved prior to them starting to rip anything out there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
Good evening, John McDonald for Robert Street. In addition to the second, the two left-hand turn lanes or, you know, when the neighborhood not wanting the right-hand turn, it was our understanding throughout the process that the mitigation funds that were to be set aside, this $150,000, would be used as part of the mitigation for this area and for the impact that it would have on the town. I see you're shaking your head, Bill, no. We were led to believe that that was in fact the case.
I'm sure where you got that information, but that was never, that was never, from what I'm told, that's never been the case.
Well, I attended every meeting and I would say that we were given that impression, that-
I'm not sure which $150,000 you're talking about.
The $150,000 that was set aside for the town.
For the selectmen's discretion, that's separate than this $150,000 that we're talking about for the traffic specific.
Correct.
Right.
Yes, that it would be used in and around.
That our understanding is that the selectmen would use that for mitigation directly impacting the neighborhood.
Okay, that part, then I stand corrected. I was under the impression that the $150,000 was supposed to be spent for the turn. I wasn't clear on the, on the second part, whether it would be spent specifically on that, on neighborhood improvements. That part I didn't hear about. It was $150,000. There's $250,000 amounts, one is a discretionary amount, the other one is $150,000 for the traffic.
In our understanding is that the discretionary amount is going to be spent on direct mitigation in the neighborhood.
That was my understanding as well.
Yes.
So we just want to make sure that's clarified.
Say that again?
That first tranche of $150,000.
For the road improvements.
Well, that's the second.
No, just the general mitigation.
General mitigation was town-wide.
It was town-wide.
I know it potentially can be town-wide.
Yes.
But, but my understanding was that if there was some things that weren't foreseen in this development, then we could mitigate them after the-
I want to be clear about this. There was no process of determination as to where that money was going to be spent.
There still isn't.
No, there still isn't. So it may be at some point that if there is a very compelling reason to do something in their neighborhood that's more compelling than perhaps all the requests that are being made, then that's, and that decision could be made.
Right, and that's why it's coming to the Board of Selectmen to-
Correct.
To judge it, I guess.
Right, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But you're, but you're talking about the mitigation items that I mentioned that are not in these copies because they're on page 17.
That's to be borne by the developer, though?
Yes, those will be-
Exactly, but that's still, that is still mitigation, meaning, you know, sidewalks, maintain the fence, do the, do the shelter for the school bus stop.
Yeah, but that doesn't come out of the $150,000.
I know, I know, I know. But what I'm saying is, there were other mitigations listed. So my question to you is, what was your idea of mitigation that would, that you would like to come out of the $150,000?
I don't think that's been decided.
Excuse me, I don't mind you speaking, but you need to come to the microphone. We can't, the people at home can't hear you from the back.
But my, what I'm saying is, there are, there is other mitigation like sidewalks, the fence, blah, blah, blah. It's, so you're not just getting, it's not just $250,000 checks. There's other mitigation that is going on that is included in the decision.
Correct.
And that's why I suggested that you guys, you know, download that so you'll see it. So there's, there is other mitigation.
Right.
My thought would be, the first $150,000 should be set aside for something that may or may not happen there.
That's unforeseen.
Yeah, unforeseen, for a certain amount of time. And five years from now, if everything's great, then-
Should be a neighborhood contingency fund.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's my thought of how it all originated. You don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah, it's really impossible to know what the full impact is going to be on the neighborhood. It's impossible.
Right. For instance, the reasoning behind the two left-hand turn lanes is because the Hanover traffic study estimated that 80 or 95% of the traffic would turn left. And conservatively, they estimated when you download that traffic study, you'll see 1,500 car trips per day. And, you know, at 95% of those taking a left-hand turn, we didn't want to see the queue come up to their entry-exit way. So we don't know what it's going to look like. And that's why we were hoping that the Board of Selectmen, in your wisdom, would hold back that and say, okay, let's look, let's see what happens and then make a determination about what mitigation we couldn't foresee would be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Daniel Miller, 3 Robert Street. Just building on that same point and what was just mentioned here. Because I think the first $150,000 should be set aside. We were under the impression the mitigation is for Domain Foxborough. So the mitigation would be, that funds would be supplied for Domain Foxborough. Yes, they are bringing in sidewalks and other things that may or may not benefit the neighborhood and may or may not actually come to pass in that. So again, as you just said, we don't know what's going to happen when this goes in, what will be needed. Will there be more trees, more anything else? So we would just like to see those funds set aside, locked in, to be just for this for a set period of time, be it three, five, seven years, so we can actually see what the effect of this is and how it'll affect our neighborhood.
Makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. In my experience, I've done a lot of 40Bs and I've seen, I think I have to go back and look at the zoning board minutes and talk to some people that were at those meetings. But we've been in projects where 100% of the mitigation goes towards that development that's in front of the town or it may go towards fire apparatus to support it, or may go towards the schools because there's kids there, or may go towards the town departments that, to support the building staff on their inspections. So, you know, it could be a whole bunch of different stuff. So I didn't want to decide at this table tonight. But I think over the next couple of weeks, if you guys wanted to look at the meeting minutes, talk to the people, talk to the neighbors, if we put this on the next agenda sometime in March, you know, hopefully we can come to a conclusion and not hold up the building permit. If it takes a little bit longer, so be it. But I don't want to vote on a motion from two people that spoke without understanding the whole thing.
How would we be holding up the building permit? We wouldn't, we wouldn't-
We have to decide on that $150,000.
I expect with the application, there'll be a permit, the building permit fee, which will be very substantial.
Right.
Along with the first $150,000 check to the town of Foxborough.
But the mechanics of it is, the $150,000 will be submitted to the town.
Yeah, so let me read that, I didn't read that, there's five or six paragraphs, but the first paragraph-
But then the building permit could be issued.
"Prior to the issuance of a building permit for the project, the Foxborough Board of Selectmen shall notify the applicant whether the applicant, one, is to pursue the design and construction of an approximately 100-foot-long right-turn lane only at an anticipated cost of approximately $150,000, or, two, is to make a mitigation payment to the town in the amount of $150,000." And it goes on to talk about the checks and balances of the design and work of the state.
Sounds like an either-or.
It is, it is an either-or.
Yeah, it is.
So my point is, and they can't get a building permit until we notify them which option.
Correct.
So if it takes us three months, it's going to be held by us for three months.
That's clear, okay.
Now, I could just point out for the board's consideration, I was at all those zoning board hearings as well over six months and I was clear on what those medig, two payments were for. Which were, the first one was to the town, in which the Board of Selectmen would use that money at their discretion. It was for any impacts town-wide.
Any impacts to, from this development?
Yeah, and it was clear. And then the second one was for impacts directly surrounding, and in particular, the Fisher Street. Now, I'd also like to point out, we don't know what the terms of the settlement were.
Correct.
And how much, if money, where monies went for that and if there was additional mitigation that we don't know about, so we have to treat the-
Is that sealed?
Excuse me?
Is the-
I don't know.
Is it sealed?
I don't know, but I do not know the terms of the settlement.
I just have a question on that. Can you explain the right lane again? Would that be, you would be taking, right now, there's Fisher Street and it's two, is it one way or two? It's two ways, right now it's two ways.
It's two ways, that's correct.
So would this $150,000 put an additional lane?
Yes, about 100 foot. It'll be about 100, right there.
So you're coming down Fisher Street.
Essentially, wouldn't that mean that you do have two lanes to go, to go left?
No, I think what's in here, Jenny, is you go to the signal, right now, you go to the signal and you either take a left or a right. What this is, they're going to provide an additional lane on the right. So you come down, go to the right, and then take a right turn while that car is waiting at the signal to take a left. So you come down and you go left or you go right on two separate lanes.
Now, for the second pay, $150,000 payment, if the board decides not to direct the Hanover group to proceed with the design and implementation, then the Hanover, the town will receive $150,000 at which point will go towards any traffic impacts that will be created from this project.
And if we go in that direction, we could vote to accept the money and then not do something with it right away until it's built, until it's up and running. And then we can see what the impacts, they're not imagined anymore, they're actual impacts.
That's right.
If I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Barry.
I was going to, wanted to make just two points. From my own perspective, I look at a 40B proposal and a comprehensive permit, it's affecting the town as a whole, not just the area in which that development is going. So accordingly, when I sat and deliberated and considered mitigation conditions, to my mind, because the town was also being affected as well as the neighborhood, because the town was being impacted, it would be appropriate for the board to have discretion for that $150,000 that's to go into a mitigation fund. Second, and I can't necessarily say that this is, would be agreeable to the developer, but if the board felt that it needed a little bit more time, a reasonable amount of time, to make a decision as far as the traffic design versus the other $150,000, we could certainly request that of the developer. I can't imagine they're going to say six months is good or nine months is good, but I would think a reasonable two or three-month extension would be, would be considered.
But still holding off on their permit?
Well, not so much holding off on the permit, but not having to do it at the time of the permit.
They get their permit, but give us, I see what you're saying, okay, more time to decide, yeah.
I just, we should, let's just bear in mind that the, that the permit fees can be a lot more than $150,000, I would suspect. So it would behoove us to-
I'm anticipating considerably more.
To not delay the issuance of the permit, but still maintain control over that $150,000.
Yeah, I thought Bernie was saying-
I'm not suggesting to delay the permit, but to delay the time within which the town needs to make a decision.
Where did the number, $150,000, to put in a-
That was an offer that they made.
The lane, I mean, is that actual, is it going to cost, to me, it seems like it would cost a whole lot more than $150,000.
Well, for a right-hand turn, it would, it would probably be, probably within, they estimated that based upon construction estimates and design estimates initially. Just to do the right-hand turn. Because you don't forget, you're not actually changing the signal at that point. You buy a signal then, and you're talking some more, it's much more substantial in that respect. So if you put a double lane, a left-hand turn lane, that's going to be much more than $250,000. Because you got to change the signalization and everything else that goes with it.
Sure.
Bill, you had said, there was a settlement, a legal settlement with the dismissal of the case. I asked if it was sealed, you said no.
Actually, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, does anybody know what the settlement, I mean, just out of curiosity, if there was a settlement that's public, what, what was the settlement?
But I got to caution you, Jenny, that's a settlement between two private parties.
Two private parties.
To bring it into a public realm and have it influence this.
Caution.
The only thing I could-
Is there mitigation involved in that?
There's no, well, again, I don't know the terms of the settlement, but what I do know is that there was nothing that the Board of Appeals was required to do with respect to the permit that we granted.
Yeah, so I think we have to look at this on the face value of what the approval and the requirements are from the town's perspective. It may overlap if we look at this and say, all right, we're going to take the money and build a covered bus stop and we all agree, and then the neighbors come back and say, well, no, they were going to do that on a private settlement. I could see it overlap later on, but right now-
But that isn't, it's already-
I use that as an example, but, you know. And again, all these are public discussions, so I'm hoping if we're going in a direction that's going to conflict with what the private settlement is, we'll find out before it's too late. And obviously, they can bring that information forward, but to ask them at a public meeting is, probably puts them in an awkward position.
I think we need more time.
Yeah.
Yep, just, Daniel Miller, again, 3 Robert Street. Just on, one of the comments that was made here is, is that the first $150,000 was going to the Board of Selectmen because this project would affect the whole town. And in some ways, it will affect the whole town. But really, the effects of this project are going to be isolated to this community here. 95 cuts it off, 140 cuts us off. We will deal with, us, the neighbors here, will deal with the majority of the effect of this project. The rest of the town will not. I mean, other than, there might be students that come, things, but the taxes of those properties will pay for that. The mitigation, under my assumption, would be that would mitigate everything that, not just that this area will be affected. Again, my opinion is that the rest of the town does not get affected by that as much. And maybe I'm naive because I don't get involved with this process all the time, but mitigation to me means mitigation for this process, not mitigation for something that's going to happen in the, on the Foxborough circle. You know, that, again, maybe down the road, it'd be great to have that extra money set aside if we don't use it all for this area, but I do not, I don't want to see any of that go away until we know that this is done. And I know I'm being redundant on that, but I just want to be very clear.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. So, I mean, we can go back and forth on a field, but let's, if it's okay with the board, let's table this for a meeting or so.
First meeting in March.
Reach out and get whatever information.
I'm not sure it's going to be first meeting in March, you've got a pretty full agenda that day, so I would think probably the second meeting in March.
Twenty-second, maybe.
Okay, and at the same time, if you do have correspondence with the applicant, maybe you want to let them know that we're pursuing- Okay, and at the same time, if you do have correspondence with the applicant, maybe you want to let them know that, um, we're pursuing it, and if it, we, again, we don't want to hold up the building permit, but if we can't get this done, buy the building permit, um, if there's consideration to extend it for another month or so.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, next on the item, um, we've got a list of annual town warrants. There's this Excel spreadsheet with the warrant title, the sponsor, and the date, I believe. So right now, there's potential twenty warrant articles in May, twenty-one if you look at the penciled one in for the.
Aggregation.
Municipal aggregation. So, um, let's, let's just go down those quickly, and Bill, you want to go down them and just explain? So a lot of these are repeat from year after year, like, uh, election and reports and things, but some of the new stuff.
You got it right there? Oh, thanks. Yeah, first of is the, uh, the, the standard ones are annual town elections, annual town reports, reports of committees, the operating budget, uh, standard, of course, CIP budget, another standard item, personnel bylaw. The personnel wage, wage board has actually been working on a revised bylaw, which will be presented at that meeting. Uh, Mary Beth's been working with them for the past six, seven months, working on this document. You'll be seeing that in draft form, uh, in a form that, that you can present at that meeting. Uh, the fire contract, uh, we hope will be completed by then. Dispatcher contract, we hope will be done, and DPW contract, we're working on both dispatch and DPW presently. We haven't really had much conversation on fire yet, so I don't know if that's going to be realistic.
I think we're waiting until after the others are ratified.
Right, so I'm not sure we'll, we'll be able to get the fire contract in for that meeting, but, um, if that's the case, well, that'll be dealt, dealt with in the fall. The FY sixteen operating budget adjustments are adjustments in the current fiscal year, which require, um, changes due to operating, uh, operational requirements and, and unforeseen, uh, changes in the, in the operating costs throughout the year. Capital budget's the same thing, um, that, that we make adjustments on that as well. Unpaid bills from prior years, uh, if you have a bill that, that comes in, uh, after the fiscal year closes, then it requires us to, to put that on a warrant for consideration. Department revolving funds authorization, that's a, that's an annual requirement to, by statute, for, for us to authorize those revolving funds throughout, throughout the town. The, uh, fund qualified OPEB trust, again, that's, that's a contribution into the OPEB trust, which we're required to do, uh, which we do every year. And expend highway funds, uh, that's to, to spend, shepherd ninety money, as well as, uh, funds that you get from the meals tax to provide for improvements to, to the roads. Uh, stabilization fund, uh, for a southeastern regional school, that was something that, um, they, they requested several, about a year ago, I believe, and then finally, I guess we, um, we took action, so I'm not sure if that's going to be needed in this case or not, that was.
Is that the one that authorized, the town says, okay, you can do the stabiliz- we already.
I think we did that.
Superintendent Lopez came in and presented that.
Yeah, so, so I'm not.
But then it was dropped from the meeting because we said, we didn't, they didn't need it, we didn't need to vote or something. So now what's this?
So we're going to need some, we're going to need further discussion on that internally.
That stabilization fund was carved from their operating budget, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's right.
Right, it just gives them permission to do a stabilization, it's not going to cost us any money.
It, it isn't, but.
But this isn't the, we're not funding that fund.
Not that we, not that we know of, I need more, I need more information on it.
But I think Jenny's right, it might be redundant.
It might be redundant, so it might be something we don't need.
No, but we didn't, we didn't vote on it because it was polled the last time, because we were told we didn't have to vote on it. Now we have to.
But I don't even know if it's, it's here for this, this consideration either, so I, I need to check on it, double check on that, all right, so. Liquor license, uh, regulations, uh, there's a new set of regulations that, uh, that, that's a group has been working on, um, to, to try and come up with.
Now, is the Economic Development Group going to make a, a suggestion and a presentation on, on, or are they going to operate direction?
That's separate from, the liquor license regu- regulations was a sub, was not the Economic Development Committee, that was a separate group, right? That's the regulations.
Is that the one that we're working with to tweak the, the?
Yes, the regulations.
Why does it have to go before town meeting? I thought it was just, didn't go before town meeting before.
Also, this isn't about new licenses.
Is this a reprint, is, I mean, uh, are you looking for, are we looking for additional liquor licenses?
Yes, yes.
So I think seventeen should be liquor license requests.
Not, not, not regulations, that's just a misprint, yeah.
And that's, that's a little different, though, because I know the Economic Development Committee is working on it, but I don't know if there should be the sponsor, the ones that we're asking for now, the selectmen or the sponsor.
Selectmen and the sponsor, okay, but we can change that, that's why this is a draft, so.
By the way, the tweaking of the liquor regulations, it's in the hands of, um, we met, uh, Chief of Larry, Dave Brown, Bahrain, and I met, and we tweaked it, it's in the hands of Dave DeLuca right now, who's checking the language, and then it will be returned to us, and then, there was just a few things that we had talked about before, so it's, nothing major.
Yeah, and you're right, that's under our jurisdiction, that's not town meeting.
Right, yeah.
Uh, abandon of Liberty Place, that will only go forward if in fact approval is gained on the, uh, the town, uh, the new Town Hall project, because we need that to, uh, to construct, to construct a new building.
What about the homeowners that are currently on Liberty Place?
There's no frontage that will affect, that, that, none of that frontage affects their, their, uh, none of the, the road part affects that frontage. It's only the part in front of like the, uh, the, uh, the face of the school, or the.
Oh, that's the only part being abandoned?
Yeah, that's the only part being abandoned, not, not the entire road. And then sewer capacity, uh, that's, um, that's anybody who's requesting sewer capacity, that's typical requirement every year. And the overlay district, uh, that's a zoning issue that, uh, they've been working, that the plan was, we're working on for the downtown area.
Yeah, but sewer capacity is for people who are right now outside of the sewer district, they're.
Right, being included, requesting to be included.
It's typically like a list of addresses.
Right.
And aggregation is something we talked about earlier, so we don't need to, um, so that's the list we have right now. Uh, people still have till Friday of this week to make requests, so, and, and everybody's fully aware of that, they've all been notified.
You're talking about the department heads have been notified?
And the committees as well.
Okay, what, what about something in the, uh, usually we put something in the, I said usually.
Yeah, for special, you would do that, or the annual would.
So if I was a resident and I wanted to bring forward a town warrant with signatures, how would I know it closes Friday?
Our, our bylaws actually say it does.
Yeah, I think it is in, I think, I think it's your bylaw, it's a, at the town bylaw for your annual. You wouldn't have that for a special, but you would for an annual.
So our bylaws says a specific date it closes?
It's supposed to close on February fifteenth, yeah.
February fifteenth?
So that's why we closed it, because of being the.
Okay.
The last, the last Friday of the day, of the, of the week. And then Monday is a holiday, so.
Though, that was always an issue with AdCom, where we used to get budgets after February fifteenth with placeholders for unspecified warrant articles, and we said, our bylaw doesn't provide for that, so we said, you know, let's, let's keep to February fifteenth so that AdCom could have the right amount of time to bid all the warrant articles.
So just so everybody's clear, Monday's a holiday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday is, is, uh, the fourteenth and, and thirteenth and fourteenth and fifteenth, so.
Okay.
Any questions about this so far? Are, are there any other articles anticipated by this board at this time?
I think Jim's working on one.
Me?
Yeah, make sure you get it in by the deadline, right?
Which one?
I don't know.
I don't know, no.
Actually, Bill, um.
Not this year.
We had a meeting of the Housing Trust before this meeting, and a topic came up where we may have to actually change the, uh, the charge of the Housing Trust, because it says that any expenditures of funds would have to go to town meeting. We had two consultants in, uh, from the state who told us that, that, um, it really mechanically would work better if there was a check and a balance where the Board of Selectmen could bless the expenditure of, of funds from, from that, uh, for particular purposes, rather than waiting a full cycle for a town meeting. So Paige might bring that up to you.
Okay. Yes, the antenna article, yes, we have one other one, and we just, uh, we, we have a town, we have a, a department head meeting this week, we're going to try and identify there's any at last, but there's an antenna issue at the public safety building. We have the potential of using that antenna for, um, for a cell tower, an existing antenna as a cell tower. So we want to try and utilize it for that purpose, but we'd have to, we have to gain authorization from town meeting to do that.
So that would be a private vendor coming in and using it, and then paying the town money to use it?
Yeah, we're, we're going to bid it and see what happens.
So we should have language on that.
You know, getting back to the Housing Trust, did they talk about extending the deadline, because right now?
We, we did.
Okay, was that going to be?
Yeah, and that would have to be in another article as well.
Yeah, I noticed, I noticed.
With Sharon's passing, that whole process got shelved, and now we're picking it back up again, but there really, realistically, there's not enough time to, uh.
But they talked about that at the planning board.
Yeah, and, um, it, it might be as long as three years. I'm not sure that's the right number, but that was mentioned tonight.
Billboard advisory, they may, they're not, there's anything coming forward on that or not?
I haven't heard anything on the, yeah.
Well, thank you.
We're, we're going to find out.
Thursday at the department meeting.
And I think the only other thing that was remotely in the back, in the potential was if we were going to get to a point where we could amend the craft organization proposal based on the optimum discussions we've been having, and that's the discussion we're going to have in executive session, but I just don't think that's anywhere close to being resolved or moving forward for May.
That's a big project.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments on the, uh, warrant? So the, the column on here and received date, they can all, um, start to fill those in, and probably at the next meeting, start, after it's closed, we'll start filling in the, um, moving forward column. And I know the first five are, are required by law, and maybe number thirteen, the Department Revolving Fund Authorization, but the other ones are kind of still too sketchy to tell them moving forward.
And we've got some draft language already that, um, is going off to town council to look at.
Okay.
So, as we get it, we'll funnel it through.
Mm-hmm, very good.
So just to give you a, a sort of a snapshot view of where we're at at this point in time, so.
Want to continue on with your town manager update?
Sure, um, just a couple of things, uh, beyond what we talked about, um. Uh, you know that the, the advisory committee is meeting again tomorrow night, so we'll be meeting with them to, uh, have further discussions along the budget. Town meeting, the special town meeting is scheduled for February.
Well, the, the police contract is on the agenda tomorrow, right?
Yeah, police contract, we, I actually presented it to them, but they have more information, they're looking for more information, by the way.
Right, and I, um, I told them we're waiting for the language from legal counsel, so I emailed him tonight and, uh, legal counsel to clarify.
Hopefully they'll have that for tomorrow night for them. So, um, so that, that's, that's on it tomorrow, I don't know if there's anything beyond that, but, uh, there may be additional discussions on, on other budget issues, but, um, as far as the, um. Yeah, I know you want to talk about the storm tonight, too, right?
A little bit, yeah.
You wanted to get into that.
Yeah.
And then the, the community compact signing is, uh, scheduled for eleven thirty on February eighteenth. Um, and so the Lieutenant Governor will be here to actually award us our, our community compact agreement. Uh, I believe the town of Eastern may join us that day, uh, so, at that time, uh.
Is that Thursday?
That is a Thursday.
It is a Thursday, it is a Thursday.
Yeah, thank, thank you for sending out that email, I think Marcia sent it out today.
I got that out today, so, um, and then, um, I'm, I'm, I, there was one other thing, I, I just keep losing it, it's going to pop into my mind, popping out, um. There was one other, one other thing here I want to tell you about.
Maybe I'll remember after the storm update.
Oh, well, first and foremost, I, I want to remember, remind everybody that town, the special town meeting is February twenty-third, um, and that, um, of course, the town hall bids will be coming in this Thursday. Hopefully, it, we'll, we'll have a, a good understanding of those around two o'clock on Thursday, so we're going to be opening them at that time, and hopefully we'll, we'll get a good indication where we are. We are going to hold a, a, a forum with the seniors on February sixteenth, which is a follow-up to what we did, uh, earlier, uh, earlier this, at the late, uh, late last month, or earlier this month, uh, which we saw, thought was very productive and a lot, and sort of like, sort of was a pre-town meeting, um, review with the seniors so that they had the opportunity to ask questions about the warrant, any questions that came up, and then also talk about the town hall project if they had any questions for that. So, um, so all, all in all, we thought that was a very productive thing, and we, we want to just follow up, once we have the bids in hand, where the project is going, but just, uh, to let everybody know that the initial filed sub-bids, um, did come in lower than the original estimate. So, um, and that, so that's about, that represents about, uh, the original estimate for that cost was about two point six million dollars, and it came in around two point three, uh, two point three five million dollars, about roughly about two and a half million dollar savings. We did get notified there was one, uh, bit.
No.
One bidder that came in.
I think your desk will point off.
Twenty, twenty fifty thousand dollars, thank you, twenty fifty thousand dollars.
Good thing you're not a finance director.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, I'm not a finance director. We did get notified that one of the bidders, um, actually withdrew this past week, so, um, but the, the next person in line, the difference was about ten thousand dollars difference, so it wasn't a huge, huge, uh, huge difference in that regard. So that's the only news we have on that front, this, we're hoping that the, the rest of the bids come in, uh, close in that range, close to that trend, but it wasn't.
You said Thursday, this Thursday afternoon, you'll know.
This Thursday afternoon, we'll have a better understanding where we're at.
Bill, what type of coverage was there? Was there a lot of participants?
There was a lot of participants in the, uh, filed sub-bid process. We had, I want to say, with the exception of maybe three categories, we had at least five or six different bidders reach, for each, uh.
That's a good sign.
That's a good sign. So that's my, that's my report for that, I know, did you want to talk about the, the storm?
Yeah, but before that, I, I talked about with you this week, a little bit on the opioid. At the last meeting, we talked about moving forward, and you talked to the department heads.
Yes, let me just, let me just add to on that. We do have a, a presentation that we're going to do this week at a department head meeting on the opioid issue. I had a meeting with, uh, our department heads', uh, uh, operations team this past week, and then we, we, we're actually looking to, we're having a, a person come in and talk to the entire group this, this week on this topic, and see how we can actually formulate a task, so, so a task force on this area, and then we report back to the board on the, on the next meeting.
Okay.
So we are moving forward on that.
All right, now, I was invited on the twenty-second to go in front of the school committee to kind of as a follow-up from our meeting, because they weren't there, and, so you guys are welcome to come on that day, and.
What day is that, Jim?
Monday the twenty-second, or the day before our town meeting. So it's, 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 it's moving in that direction anyways, that the department heads are talking about it and kind of organizing a, a process?
Yes.
Interestingly enough, um, the Mass Municipal Association is starting to get on board with, uh, with the opioid.
They did send out some information, which I'm going to share with folks at that, that meeting as well. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a big issue across the state, and they, and the MMA actually identified that as being a very big issue that we all need to get behind at this point, it's a call for action, is what they, what they, they've identified it as.
Uh, thank, thank you for bringing that message to the departments. Uh, so the storm, um, and again, I'll, I'll reiterate from the beginning, um, it wasn't on the agenda, but I, I think the board needs to discuss it, and you need to hear from the board our perception from the public safety, meeting that we had on Monday with the fire chief, the police chief.
Public works.
Public works, there was one portion of it, but what happened, I think, years ago, and the promises that were made and the expectations, I think, kind of fell short a little bit, so if you wanted to give your overview of the storm, and we can chime in.
Right, I, I, well, thank you for doing that, I, I, first of all, I want to say, uh, thanks for the work that was done by our crews. Public Works, uh, did a terrific job of, of getting the roads clear and open as, as best they possibly could under the circumstances. The, the first storm was a very difficult storm because it was, it was, it was a heavy wet snow that then got later, it got very cold later on, and it froze in some cases. So it was difficult to, to remove that, but they did the best job that they could under the circumstances. And then we had a follow-up storm right, right after that, uh, which, which occurred yesterday, uh, which added to that, that accumulation. But fortunately, it was a, it was a dry snow, so it was easy, much easier to, to, to clean up, and it didn't seem to stick as much as was, was originally forecasted. Originally, it was forecasted to be around eight to ten inches, and we ended up getting probably, in order of about six. So, um, it was a, it was a better storm to manage in that regard. The, because the, the original storm was such a difficult, heavy wet snow, it did obviously have an impact on, uh, on power outages, and, and at one point, we had about forty-eight hundred, um, households out of power here in the community. It was pointed out to me, which I was unaware of until actually that meeting on Monday, that actually the towns of Norton and, and, um, and Shar- Norton and Sharon were about a hundred percent out at one point. So we, as bad as we were, there were people that were worse than us, but, but the fact is, is that, you know, we were able to, some of our, our outages would stay longer than anticipated. The total estimated time for, for, for outages in the community was around thirty hours in total. The total estimated time for, for, for outages in the community was around thirty hours in total. Some of those totals, some of those outages lasted a matter of just a few hours, some lasted, um, a good twenty-eight, twenty-six to twenty-eight hours in some cases. So, um, the problem that we ran into, um, the observations that we had and, and the efforts that were made to try and coordinate efforts with, with, and National, National Grid on this, was that National Grid, I think, are caught short in terms of their, their availability of crews for this storm, because the, the original forecasts were not to have this storm go to hit as far, far east and, and north of where, of where it landed. As such, they did not anticipate that level of, of, of tree damage and, and wire damage. They didn't have the crews, they, they did subsequently, when the storm hit, they were able to, uh, get hold of crews. Crews reported here from Quebec, Canada, as far away north as Quebec, Canada, and other, and other areas, uh, north of the, north of, of our, of our area. But they didn't arrive really until Saturday, so we, so we were short, left short with crews for that period, most of the period on Friday into Saturday morning. Some of those, uh, about twelve of those crews were stationed here in town, the Quebec crews were stationed here in town yesterday, just in case we had more problems for outages. So if yesterday's storm turned out to be worse than it was, we were pretty well prepared for that event. But as, as Chairman Deves points out, they were not really as prepared as they could have been, or perhaps should have been, for the storm that, that occurred on Friday. So as a result, our, our responses were delayed in terms of getting wires back up and service back restored, uh, in the, in a manner that it was. Generally speaking, uh, and I clearly was not, so I'm gonna preempt my, my points here, I was not here for when, when the points were made about, or the promises were made about how service should be reported, and how service would be handled, service outages would be handled. But generally speaking, my experience has been, was that a thirty-hour response, given the type of storm that we had, was not a bad response, but it could have been better. And there were gaps in, in where that, that coverage could have been. There were certain outages that could have been repaired fairly quickly if they'd had, if they had crews in town, in town to, to address them, but they were actually scattered in different places to try and get, uh, power restored as quickly as they could in, in, in areas all around us. So I think we didn't have really enough people in town to address the needs that we had at the time.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that was one item, um, of, of where the crews were and why it took so long. And the other item was, if you remember, in the end of two thousand ten and two thousand eleven, it kind of was a wake-up call to the town that there was a lot of limbs that were hanging over trees.
Yes.
Um, that were just not maintained by, um, the requirements of National Grid, or our requirements by National Grid. Following those storms, I, I think you saw a lot of utility trucks going back and forth, a lot of tree clearing. I haven't seen them in years, and, and what I'm hearing from DPW was the soft pines, those were the limbs that were falling right down. It's, it's not that there were high winds and the tree thirty feet away fell over and hit the wires, those were, those were limbs that over the last couple of years grew, they grew quick, because they're soft wood, and then they fell. Where, where has the maintenance been over the last couple of years from National Grid? Because that was, I, I think the town made provisions in our laws on historic roads and stuff, that they can go in and they can go from ground to top and clear it, and that's what they started to do. So what I suggested to Bill was, rather than tell National Grid how unhappy we were, if that's collective, and you guys got the phone calls, too, rather reach out to National Grid and say, please, please, give us a formal report on the status of the two storms. Prefer, you know, most likely the, the first one, the response times and the number of crews, so we can look at it, and then kind of report back that either that wasn't the case, that we saw it, it wasn't sufficient, and, and tie that into the, the maintenance. But also, you know, the experiences of, I heard a lot of people calling National Grid, they'd get the recording, they would say nine-thirty on Saturday night, you know, across the board, and it didn't change. And, and I've heard people went to good hotels in the middle of the day, and then paid for it, and then the electricity came on an hour later. So, um, speaking to a real person, having that connection, um, it just, had I not seen that before and, and gone through all that, I, I think I probably wouldn't have, uh, it wouldn't have bothered me, but that was specific items. And then, um, you know, just, just the whole, where are we with this, and what are your thoughts on what you guys were hearing with this storm?
Yeah, I agree. Maybe ask for their maintenance records, too, when, when they've been through trimming the trees, too. I don't know if the highway department keeps.
Well, I, I, my question I have, is that maintenance, um, effort supposed to be perpetual, or was that a one-time?
Should be perpetual.
Perpetual.
Should be, so then they could get, give an update on what they've been doing in recent years. And if it's zero, then it was a one-time effort.
Yeah, we should, we should require a plan for them for, for the upcoming, upcoming season.
Yeah.
You know, from April to October, what's, what's their, their, uh, tree maintenance plan?
Bill, I also saw, I saw that, um, communications was on your mind, and that, you know, the town needed a central point of communications. Where in the past, that, I think it was storm years ago, it was chaotic. Communications, okay?
The communications, actually, um, what I did was, um, I formally, I formulated a, a sort of like a funnel of communication, so we didn't get, we didn't have multiple people reaching out to, to N-Grid, because when you do that, that just creates confusion on their end. So the chief actually served as the, as the point of contact, the fire chief, served as a point, because he's actually the emergency management director, so he's the point of contact with N-Grid, and I left it at that. And if, and, and the only time I, I only called, reached out to National Grid once, and that was when we didn't get an immediate response to some of the, uh, information that, the request that we made, which I then got a response once I called. So I can tell you that I respected that chain of command throughout the entire process, and it seemed to work well. So, um, we're gonna try and follow that same kind of format going forward, uh, unless, of course, something requires us to change it. But I think having that central, uh, voice of command is, is a much better approach than having a multiple points of contact with, uh, with, with National Grid, particularly in, in a scenario like that.
How does, how does that flow down to the homeowner, meaning?
Well, what, what would happen is, what, you see, we, we recommend that the homeowner contact National Grid in this case, to let them know. Now, in talking with our fire and police, uh, folks, uh, the chief, both chiefs indicated that they also prefer to have folks call, uh, the, the, the fire and police statement, not on the nine-one-one line.
On the business line, right?
Clearly, yeah, on the business line, not, not the nine-one, if, unless it's a clear emergency, where something's on fire or requires emergency response for, uh, somebody's been hurt, or, you know, or there's some kind of a fire, or something that requires an immediate level of response. But something like a power outage, you should call the business line and report it there as well. Reason why that's good is because then, then we have a rec, we have a record locally of that as well. The previous experiences I've had is that we've tried to keep them from not calling dispatch under, because it can sometimes clog up the, the real emergency, uh, calls coming in. And so you, I, we're, we have to be careful about that. So to the extent that people can call, um, National Grid, we, we encourage them to do that. I agree that if they can have a person on the other end answering the calls, though sometimes I get so many of them, it just, they automatically goes to a, a voicemail scenario. But if you have a, if the extent they can have an live person answering the calls, it's always better than having an automated response. Now, it said in the automated response that, that power would be back on at nine-thirty on Saturday, most of our power was restored by eight o'clock on Saturday night. Most of our power was, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent.
I know one whole development that wasn't restored till Sunday morning, so.
Okay.
I don't know about the ninety-nine point nine percent.
Okay.
Which neighborhood was that?
Condos off of Coke Cassidy Streets on the field.
Oh, no, those were, uh, those Kevin Weinfeld's properties?
No, no.
Okay.
Right, because I know those were restored on Saturday, yeah, Saturday morning, actually.
It was Sunday morning, um, I think they powered back on about eight AM.
Sunday morning.
Yeah.
I did talk to Roger Hill on, um, Friday, when it was almost dark on Friday. It was a great sunset, that was the only good part of that storm.
Yeah, it was, actually.
But he said that, um, you know, they, it caught them by surprise how heavy the snow was.
It was.
And it was difficult, and they were in a race, uh, as you mentioned, a race against time, trying to get it off the roads before it froze. So, um, Roger said he had been out there for seventeen hours, and, you know, honestly, it was probably one of the heaviest, uh, snowstorms, not deep, but just it was like moving concrete.
It was full of water, yeah, it was full of water.
Has he changed his philosophy on sidewalks, plowing them? Because, I mean, I was shocked to find the ones on Sunday, ten o'clock in the morning, on, all the way down Main Street, all the main streets not plowed.
I think they got them right around, I think, I think what happened was, I think they were waiting for it to warm up a little bit on, because it was so, it was so cold, that they were able to try and get out there after it softened up a little bit to try and get them at that point. But I think what happened was that they've been working for so long, around the clock, to get the, the snow on, on the, on that storm, that it just, I think they just ran out of time.
I, I would suggest at least, like, the main street, around the common, um, those had to be done during the storm. I mean, there were several people walking on Main Street, because they had no other option, um, and that's a severe safety hazard. And I mean, like I said, it wasn't like the day after, it was a day and a half after the storm.
Right.
Nothing had been done. I wasn't just sure if, um, I've heard, you know, rumors from people that they're not doing certain sidewalks anymore, or only, you know, by schools or whatever, so I wasn't sure if he changed his approach.
That part of, that part I haven't heard.
I think it's still on the priority list.
Yeah.
You know, but sidewalks.
It may have been a timing with the, with the sleeping of the plow drivers and, and getting a second wind.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not aware of any changes in our process, Chris, I mean, he's not, he's not, he's not mentioned that to me. In fact, he said they put, they put three, they put three sidewalk plows out, so they were out, uh, the whole time, and they were, none of them were damaged, so they were ball working. Yeah, so.
Okay.
And to John's point on communication, we also encourage people to look on our Facebook page, um, the town continued to provide updates there.
I appreciate, sure.
Yeah, we updated.
With a link to, um, we have the link, Marcia did a great job embedding the link right to the National Grid, um, the N-Grid out, outage map, and here's how to get in touch. So every time Bill and I received an update from Roger, we would communicate, um, a message and put it on Facebook.
That's where I'm gonna go, I won't call you guys anymore.
Well, the, yeah, the, the website, too, has the, the phone numbers for Comcast, Verizon, Police, Fire, um, so, like, like night and day from, from years ago.
So as long as people have power, they can check Facebook.
Yeah, yeah.
Most people's phones were working, so.
Yeah, and, and again, to echo, and, well, to follow up on the question on communication, years back, I mean, I was joking, we used to give Marcie Reeds, the president of National Grid's cellphone number out to all the angry residents and say, you call her. I'm not kidding, we did, and, you know, and, uh, here, I mean, I was afraid to see Bill on Monday morning, because you were Saturday night answering residents' calls and emails and following it. And the two thousand ten, beginning of two thousand eleven.
Come a long way.
Yeah, yeah, but another, for communication, you guys did a nice job.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, it was, um, I think that's the probably, probably most critical piece, is to let people know that we're listening, and that we're paying attention to things, and we do get word out pretty quickly. I mean, if, once we get, if something's a real serious problem, our dispatch folks do a great job of getting that word out. The problem is, is that sometimes, um, I mean, for instance, I, I never knew that somebody was still out as early as Sunday morning. If you hear something like that, feel free to let me know, because I can, I can address that a lot quicker.
I would have, I, I got the call at seven AM Sunday morning, and then.
Oh, okay.
Uh, call back at eight, um, because I, in that meantime, I was going National Grid's website and doing some research.
That's surprising, though, because at the debriefing on Monday, I thought Police and Fire said everyone was up.
Everything was up pretty much by, he said they, with, with, there was a few exceptions, only because there was.
The, the big trions.
Yeah, there was East Street, there was a, East Street that knocked down a few, they had to replace the poles, what happened, but they, they never lost power, except to, to, to replace the poles, and then they had to, they had to shut it down, cut the power and replace it.
There was a big tree that came down on Spring Street as well.
Yeah.
That, 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 I'd moved a pole, and I don't think it took it down.
Yeah.
So, um, so I just, you know, some lessons learned, again, use, use, use the N-Grid line to, to report things and, and to contact, uh, our business line, our fire and police business line for that. Check our Facebook page, check our website for any updates, and, um, and, and the central flow of information. Board members, if you have a concern, feel free to let me know, and I will in turn let the chief know, um, or, yeah, you certainly can let the chief know directly, but you just, if, I, I like to know, too, so I'm making sure that those, those become priority issues as well.
So I guess to close it, could you reach out to National Grid and ask them for a formal report, and if, if we can date it before our next meeting? At least that we can have it in our informational packet and see how our understanding is close to their understanding.
Okay, you do that. Thank you. Mary Beth, I guess.
Assistant Town Manager update?
Yes, um, I have several, uh, sort of human resource-type updates. We have, um, we're now in the, uh, process of finalizing those collective bargaining agreements that you approved, and, um, meeting with the unions to make sure that our understanding of the language is the same as theirs, and talk about implementing. So, uh, we had a very successful one with the steelworkers last week, and it was, uh, it was fun to all be sitting in the same room around the same table.
Fun?
And agreeing, it really was.
Actually, yeah, it was, it wasn't, it was no animosity, it was actually a lot of agreement.
We actually went through, yeah, went through pay, um, point by point to make sure that when, even when it gets approved, funded at town meeting, that when we roll it out and implement it, there aren't any questions or, um, misinterpretations. So, um, that was successful. We also have a lot of stuff going on in recruitment and hiring right now, um, we just made two offers to dispatchers, one full-time, one part-time, to fill vacancies. Uh, we're in process with civil service on all of the paperwork on two promotions for the position of lieutenant, those are being finalized, um, this week. We, uh, made an offer to a payroll coordinator to fill a vacancy, and I just got a text that they accepted the offer.
Great.
We did final interviews today for public works supervisors to fill a retirement, um, we have another, uh, one opening in Public Works we're gonna be interviewing for. So we've, we're cleaning up a lot of those positions, it was kind of, it felt badly that DPW was a little bit short-staffed, but, um, Roger said, you know, he felt he was okay, um, during this storm. We are, um, also, uh, working, as Bill mentioned, with Personnel, um, Wage Board on the revision of the bylaw. We're gonna roll it out to the employees, as you know, there's about ten employees impacted by the current bylaw, but we're going to announce a meeting, and Personnel Wage Board is gonna present to those employees, you know, what the personnel bylaw is gonna look like. And, um, then we're gonna be coming to a meeting, Personnel Wage Board presenting to you late March, early April, on the, the language as well. You'll have the language in your packet well before then, it's pretty much drafted, and it's gonna go to town council in the next week or so. Just wanted to say, I had the pleasure of attending the hugs meeting on February third, uh, it's a great organization, they, um, they've done a lot of great stuff, um, it was a great meeting, and, um, I'm looking forward to, um, attending a Fox Care's meeting on February twenty-fourth. So trying to get out and, um, do some of the community meetings, um, and had the pleasure, finally, of, um, our new library director has instituted regular staff meetings. As you know, library, because of the, the way the staff works, it's hard to get the whole group together, so he's instituted quarterly staff meetings where, um, he had a morning and an afternoon session, so that both people could, um, attend, and I had the pleasure of, uh, sitting in. We rolled out our query process and all of that, but, um, had a great interaction with them, and, um, I've been promised five minutes on all the next, um, meetings to come. So, um, I just want to commend Manny on his communication with the staff, uh, they were very pleased to have that, that meeting.
Nice.
That's it.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other items that we missed along the way, suggestions? All right, so, uh, at this point, we're gonna go into executive session to talk about, um, three things, one to approve the January twenty-sixth executive session minutes.
Chairman, I think Barrett had the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barrett, yep. I gotta look up more often.
Barrett, do now, Fox Per Reporter Newspaper?
I was just, uh, when exactly were the promises made by National Grid, um, formally made to the town in terms of response?
Uh, it was.
Two thousand ten-ish, two thousand eleven.
Yeah, it was November of two thousand ten.
We had a lot of series of, you know, we had storms and.
January eleventh, yeah.
And where did the person live, Chris, uh, who didn't get power until, back until Sunday?
Um, right off of Coke Cassidy.
Right off of Coke Cassidy, because, yeah, I'd also heard that the major clusters were out, so on Saturday, when I talked to the chief, so, uh, excellent. And, uh, were you guys overall happy with the way the town employees were? I mean, you know, you praised the DPW, were you fine with how the fire department, the police department handled this?
Yeah, I, I haven't heard any, of all the complaints, I, I have not received one from the DP, about the DPW or fire or, um, police.
Excellent, so it's like squarely on the, on the National Grid in terms of complaints, no complaints and such. Um, also, I, can I get a copy of the warrant, because, uh, because of actual snow, I wasn't able to pick up my packet on Friday, because.
Oh, it's here, I have, I have, I have.
You have the warrant?
I have your packet.
Oh, you have the packet, oh.
I have your packet. I have your packet for you.
Brilliant. All right. That is done.
Can I, can I just, I, I think we want to just be clear about the fact that.
Yes, sir.
That I, I think our public safety folks and our, our public works folks did a great job during the storm. Um, and that our concerns about, from, from, um, National Grid go towards, um, the response times. I mean, getting, getting, getting people back up and running.
It, it was basically the, the Fri- the storm was Friday going into Saturday.
Right.
And I, I don't know if you have the numbers, but very minimal crews on the brunt of the storm, and they responded after.
Okay, excellent. No, that's about everything. Enjoy your executive session. I'm just going to pick this up and then.
There you go. For you.
Good luck.
All right.
Thank you.
So, the three items are to approve the executive January twenty-sixth, uh, meeting minutes, to talk about the Gillette Stadium lease negotiations, and then the third one is the fire station discussion on real property. So, do I have a motion to end the hearing and go into executive session?
Make a motion, we close the selectmen's meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, all is in favor. All right, motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the three items that Jim just mentioned.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor? All right, roll call, John.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Dave and Jenny?
Yes.
All right. Have a good evening. We'll see you following, actually, that's a good point. We're not meeting Tuesday. Are we having a special?
We'll post a meeting.
We may have a post a meeting earlier on the twenty-third.
Are you, you're not going to participate in item number four, right?
I will not, yeah, recusing myself from item three, so.
All right, I just want to make sure you, you put it on the record. Okay.
Uh, all those in favor, so everyone said, so have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks.